Welcome to the 2013 Denver School Board Debates presented by A+ Denver. This November voters will make important decisions that will impact kids for the next four years. Hear directly from the candidates about their plans to elevate education on the public agenda.
Hello and welcome to the 2013 School Board Debates presented by A+ Denver along with partners EdNews Colorado and Fox 31 Denver. I want to thank you for joining us this evening as we talk to the two candidates vying for the District Two School Board seat representing Southwest Denver. The candidates are Rosario C. DeBaca here just to my right and Rosemary Rodriguez. Thank you both for being with us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
For those of you at home who don't know, A+ Denver is an advocacy organization with a mission to harness the power of Denver's civic leadership to build public will and advocate for the changes necessary to dramatically increase student achievement in public education in Denver. We're going to start off with a couple of questions, sort of a broad question here to outline your vision as a school board member for the district. In about two minutes each, if you could take two minutes to describe what you would do to accelerate achievement, to perhaps change the direction of Denver Public Schools, to increase achievement, and to answer the broader question, is DPS on the right track? We flipped a coin before to start to see who goes first, and Rosario, you're up first. So in two minutes, your vision for the district.
Certainly. First, my vision for Denver Public Schools is that it function truly as a community institution, where the community is engaged, informed about the goals in the district, and that there is transparency and accountability from the board and from the administration so that we can begin a truly collaborative effort to retain the best educators, to recruit young energetic professionals to come and work in Denver Public Schools, and that our district provides equity and an excellent education to all the children in Denver Public Schools. So that as families grow, other people will also move into the district and see that we are a national model of excellence, that regardless of background, all children have an opportunity to succeed.
Is that happening right now? Just a follow-up question real quick. Is that happening in DPS? The achievement growth strong enough?
The achievement is definitely not happening, and it's very uneven. And there are many children who really miss the opportunity to grow the accountability, and the transparency is definitely not taking place. And that is a concern for many people in the community who really want to be more involved and to be more supportive of what happens in the schools because they belong to everybody. It's our commitment to the children.
Thank you. Rosemary Rodriguez, in about two minutes, your broad vision for the district, if you can touch on those issues of achievement as well.
Yes. Well, my vision for the district is a high-performing school in every neighborhood and high-performing teachers and school leaders in every building. I, like my opponent here, believe that absolutely every child in the district should have a chance to succeed, and that we all need to work together for that. We have an achievement gap in this district, and Latino kids and African-American kids are lagging behind. And there's programs that we know work. I want to replicate those programs, starting with preschool and early childhood education for all children in Denver, and all the way through the 12th grade with college readiness programs.
Generally, do you think DPS is moving in the right direction?
Well, we've seen about six years of growth, continuous growth. It's incremental in those two communities that I mentioned, but we are seeing growth. As long as we're on that trajectory, I want to support it and hopefully increase it.
So you support the quote-unquote "Denver Plan" in its current form?
I think the Denver Plan could be revised. I think it's been sort of the guiding document for over five years, I believe, and I think it's always a good time to look at it, to improve upon it. We know a lot more than we did then about what works.
What do you think of the Denver Plan? Do you support it in its current form?
I don't, because really, in order to have success in a classroom, what you absolutely need is for the teacher, the student, and the parent to function as partners and to be ready for instruction to happen every single day. And so much of the Denver Plan really rests on holding all the success of the instruction and the outcomes in standardized tests on the teacher. Ultimately, I don't care if you teach in kindergarten or you teach in a college or university. In order for that educator to be successful, they need a lot of resources, they need a lot of support, they need professionals who really understand the environment where they're working, so that they have the support to do their job. And the child needs to also have the support and the evaluation so that they understand what they are up against. English is my second language. I started school without knowing a word of English, and it was a struggle. And because of my own experience, I understand the anxiety and the preoccupations that parents from non-English speaking families are walking in with. And so we have to work with the kids who come in with different strengths, but also a lot of concerns. And right now, too much of the Denver Plan is really making the teacher be in the limelight, and we're not considering all the other factors.
Is it too focused on the teacher, Rosemary?
Well, the teacher is the instructional leader in that classroom. So is the Denver Plan too focused on it? No, I don't believe so, but I do believe that focus on the teacher is appropriate. And like my opponent, I agree that the teachers should receive all the necessary supports, but the instruction happens between that teacher and that child.
One more question on just sort of the district broadly. The goal, the goals of 3.5% achievement growth increase per year in reading, writing, and math, those the right goals for the district?
Well, you know, 3.5 is a marginal goal, and we haven't achieved it yet. So realistically, is it a realistic goal if we can't achieve it? I always learned that in human growth, one should set achievable goals, and that way one has, you know, is motivated to keep meeting them. But I think we should demand excellence from our children and from everybody in the district, and so 3.5 is not high enough.
What do you think of that goal?
The goal in the abstract, making it an absolute goal, may not apply in every situation. For instance, if you have a classroom where the students have already mastered proficiency at grade level or beyond, that may not be an adequate goal. And many times when students achieve but not at 3.5%, they're penalized, and is it an adequate reflection of what has happened there? In other situations, students may exceed the goal because you have a teacher who has a lot of experience, has the resources, has all the proper support, all the ducks are in a row, so to speak, so that that educator can really bring out the most of a student. And the evaluation of what happens in the classroom or in a building really has to take into consideration the background and the skills and the knowledge of the principal. So that if you have a principal who is new to education or in that position versus the principal who has a lot of experience but not with that population, I think a lot of different things have to be considered so that when you evaluate the whole, all of these different factors have to be weighed.
Okay, I want to move to a couple of questions about the district and the finances. School boards are responsible for managing a pretty large budget. Last year, the approximate budget for DPS was $711 million in terms of general fund dollars. Marguerite Rosa describes the importance of district financial management in this quote. She says, "How you deploy public funds is your strategy as a district." So how would you, as part of the school board, redeploy funds perhaps, put the money in different places to improve achievement? We'll start with you since she started the last time.
Okay. Well, funds, in order to improve achievement, they should be absolutely allocated to the classroom in the largest percentage possible. The funds for teacher training and teacher improvement, I think, are also critical because, again, the teacher is the instructional leader in the classroom. So I would, my bias in terms of school funding would be classroom funding and teacher training.
Teacher training and pay, or is that a different issue?
Well, I think it's, well, the pay's in there, but I think if we are demanding so much of our teachers, we need to give them the resources and the training to become great teachers.
Rosario?
So in terms of the, we do have a huge budget. At the same time, the district is growing, the student population is growing, so it's a moving train. And one of the things that I think really are going to help the board make better decisions that serve the interests of the community is to engage people from the community with a lot of expertise before the big decisions are made so that they are aware of the assets and the challenges that we have. It's like any family, any group. We have a lot of needs, but we have to prioritize, and how are we going to be most efficient in using the buildings and using everything that we have? And, you know, for instance, in this bond that was just recently passed, the bulk of all the funds went to Northeast Denver. Southwest and West Denver is second to the last in funding. Our classrooms are overcrowded. And with the gentrification of downtown Denver, a lot of families are finding it impossible to live in that part of town, so they're moving into our area. Our area is the most affordable for working families. And so we have to consider all of these different responsibilities. I do think that we need the expertise of people in the community. We are, you know, the board is there to reflect on what the community wants, but they need to be informed.
Andrea Merida, the current board member for this district, she didn't support the bond that passed last year, even though now it is doing a lot for the district. I mean, it's, you know, providing space for hundreds of kids and preschool kids attending the Early Childhood Center in your district. Do you agree with her? Did you support the bond?
You know, there were concerns that were raised in the community about the bond, and so, no, I'm not Andrea Merida look-alike. I'm not her clone, and I have, you know, very, very different positions. But I do think that if the community had had a choice, certainly if anybody had asked me, I would have said, "Bring some of those excellent programs that have served in other parts of the city. I want them here in Southwest Denver." A lot of families have given up their second car, a lot of families have had to take a second job. So being forced to go to some of the excellent programs, the IB programs or similar programs in other parts of the city are a hardship. And so I would have probably advocated for more of the bond money to come into our neighborhood schools.
So overall, did you, I mean, did you support it?
I did, but at the same time, I did not support the process. I think it just left a very, you know, a very alienating, you know, feeling for a lot of the people in our community because we care. I mean, we care for the kids, all the kids, not just the kids in Southwest Denver, but we certainly are marginalized. We're asked to contribute. When the district got into such a huge debt, there were houses all around us, you know, neighbors who had their belongings thrown out in the lawns because of foreclosures. Those are the sorts of things that we're dealing with. And so the hardest thing is to know that there are children who are part of those families that are disrupted. And as a taxpayer and as a mom who had five of my children graduate from DPS, I want to do everything I can to support the families that are in the district. And we will go through a lot of sacrifices, but we want to make sure that at the end of the day, our kids come out with a better learning experience, day in, day out.
Rosemary, on the bond and the Mill Levy last year, do you support it?
I did. I supported the programs that the Mill Levy funded, like tutoring and early childhood education, and I supported building the buildings, constructing the buildings that would house those programs, like the Pascal Ledoux Early Childhood Center in Southwest Denver.
So you think it's been positive? Do you share any of her concerns about the process?
Having done a couple of bond programs myself on City Council and previously as a member of Mayor Webb's staff, a community process is important in determining how the funds are going to be allocated. But I think there's plenty in this most recent bond for Southwest and actually West Denver.
When it comes to facilities, do you believe that the co-location of two or more schools in one building with community support and buy-in is a good use of district-owned buildings?
I do, especially when buildings are half-empty. They're a resource, as my opponent pointed out, they're owned by the community, and when they're half-empty, what useful purpose is that serving? In the past, charter had to go outside of district buildings in order to find a location. And my opponent at one of our previous debates pointed out that one is next to a payday lending office on a busy federal boulevard. And isn't it better to have them in the neighborhood where children live and safe, guarded by, you know, the care and the respect that neighborhoods have for schools? I think that's a better use.
Do you want to respond to that or share your thoughts on co-location?
I'd like to just share my thoughts on co-location. Just like anything else, it's going to be brought into a neighborhood, something like what happened in Southeast Denver where there was exchange of property and what people thought was a park was no longer a park. I think that the communities need to understand the impact of having any sorts of changes in a building. For instance, with Dora Moore in downtown Denver, it was, you know, a blighted area, but with the participation of the community, there was a parent who was an architect who worked with the Historical Society. That whole area was transformed because there was buy-in on the part of the community, and everybody contributed. When schools are co-located, so for instance, and I'm glad it hasn't been, that level of chauvinism hasn't been shown to our part of town, but at North High School, it was very distressing to see that parents were pitted against each other. And at that point in time, the decision had been made, there was no process for the businesses, for all the different elements of the community to really have a chance to talk about the impact of what that co-location was going to be. And there are finite resources in a district. People need to understand the impact of FTEs going into a campus. Are we going to be losing FTEs? Are we not? Are there going to be opportunities to share resources? Coaches, you name it, arts instructors? People can be won over if they are treated with respect and given a chance to consider all the information.
Quickly, Amendment 66 on the ballot November, we know what it is, $950 million annually from an income tax hike to generate more money, fund full-day kindergarten statewide, more money in the classroom. Do you both support it?
I support it, yes.
I do. I signed the petition, and I plan to vote for it.
In 30 seconds. Why?
Well, it'll benefit districts like Denver, which have a high numbers of English-language learners and lower-income students.
And quickly, your pitch to voters who are listening?
Colorado severely underfunds education, K-12 and higher education. And even as we talk about increasing the graduation rate and getting our kids ready to go to college, the tuition in our colleges is flying through the roof. Everything that we can front-load to improve the preparation and the education of our kids is going to put them at an advantage.
Okay. We want to shift to a couple of questions now about accountability, teacher accountability specifically. Senate Bill 191 ends a practice called forced placement, where teachers are placed in schools, most often schools with hard-to-serve populations of students, and many times against the school leader's wishes. The teachers' union has threatened to sue DPS in the state if they enforce placement. Can you react to this and give us your views on the new policy of mutual consent, where both the teacher and the principal have to agree on the hire? Do you want to start?
Sure. You know, one of the challenges that any professional has, I mean, you make a commitment to do an excellent job in your discipline, is to be put in a situation where you feel overwhelmed and unprepared to deal with. The fact of the matter is that many of the young people who are coming into the schools may not have grown up in neighborhoods where they have been exposed to all the different barriers that the children encounter, but I do think that they can be developed to be able to teach in any environment. But the district has to allocate the resources and give them an opportunity to grow and develop. And, you know, Mr. Budkovich at West High School, Ms. Barbara Allen at Horace Mann, they were not Latino, but they did an excellent job moving the kids forward. And it's the background, an excellent preparation, and also having an opportunity to learn to work with the population that they have been assigned. We're all afraid of new challenges. That's normal for us. Teachers are no exception.
Rosemary, do you have a difference, opinion on this?
Well, I think forced placement is a program that we, I'm glad to see the end of that. It's not good for the instructor, and it's not good for the school. The accountabilities in 191, I know they've been challenged, but they've also been upheld. I think it's a way to really build accountability into our instructional system. And everybody should be held accountable. Board members should be held accountable, too. We're holding our kids accountable. We're asking them to perform, to learn, to perform on tests. Let's hold everybody accountable in the entire system.
Earlier this year, DPS received a grant to further improve the LEAP system. It's used to evaluate teacher performance. What are your thoughts about the new system?
LEAP was developed with teachers. The district developed it in conjunction with teachers. I think it's a great tool. Again, it tells us what areas need to be addressed in performance. It requires that teachers be, you know, observed, which a lot of teachers have told me, you know, "Nobody ever sets foot in my classroom." So I think it's a good tool. The implementation has been a little rough, I think, and people's lives are involved, so that makes everything hard, but I think it's worthy of supporting.
Rosario, on the LEAP program?
On the LEAP program, there is so much emphasis just put just on the outcomes of a teacher, and it's really on the abilities of a child to take standardized tests. There are many people of any background who are very good at writing an essay but have a hard time with a standardized test. That said, the evaluation should be a 360-degree process, where it is not only what the instructor does in the classroom and how they are effective or how they are not effective, but it's got to be continuous. You cannot say that you've given a fair evaluation to any professional if it is not from day one, because many times employers will lure you and say, "This is a great place," but then they leave you hanging, and that cannot happen, whether it's the principal, whether it's people who have special backgrounds. Let's say you didn't expect to have five special-needs children. You need help fast because not all special-needs kids are the same. The instructors need to have the resources and the development and the training so that they are able to do their job in the classroom. And right now, there is nothing in writing that says there is going to be a 360-degree process so that as the year goes along, the instructor can document the resources that they've had, that the concerns that they have raised and how they have been addressed. There's plenty of opportunity for everybody to learn and get feedback on how to improve the evaluations.
It's another contentious issue that you may face as a board member, and that's school closures. Under what circumstances would you support shutting down a school? And everybody talks about Montbello and what's going on out there, but this happened in Southwest Denver, too, in terms of Lake Middle School being kind of split into two new schools within that school. When and why is a school closure the right thing to do?
Well, if a school is failing to educate the children in that building, for, you know, one might say one year is too many, I'd say for any extended period of time. I think the board has to look at that. We have a responsibility in this city to educate our children, and if we're failing to do so, I think that puts a school squarely before the board, and the board needs to deal with that.
Do you think the strategy at Lake is working so far?
Lake, as far, Lake's not in our district, but it's just north of it. But I think there are elements of the Lake program that are working. I think that achievement across the board is probably not where we want it to be, and I'm just looking at the most recent figures.
Rosario, what are your thoughts?
I think the only time that you should close a school is when there's environmental contamination or there is danger to the students and the people who work in the building. The building does not perform a teaching function. It is the manner in which a lot of other factors are involved. And actually, several years ago, when some of my own children were in school, I was meeting with other community members at Lake Middle School to address some of our concerns and to offer our advice, because we all had different levels of expertise. We wanted to offer our time and service to the administration so that we could reach out to the community and start working with the parents of the children who are having a lot of challenges learning. On the north side of Lake, you have a developing community, more affluent. On the south side of Lake, you have a lot of low-income housing, there's a lot of transitional, you know, families. So it's a very uneven population. The faculty there don't have a continuum of students. They will not see the sibling of the child that they taught one year or two years down the line. So you're talking about measuring students that are not going to be there. On the other hand, there is a commitment. I mean, it's a beautiful building, and everything that can be done should be done to work with the needs of the different students.
I want to switch to school choice. It's another controversial topic. Charters like DSST and Strive, they're getting pretty good results, and they have long waiting lists, so it seems like there's a lot of people that want to get their kids in those schools. Should the district... Should the district encourage replication of those kinds of schools?
I think what the district should do is listen to parents like myself, who I'm the mom that will not go away. For the longest time, I kept saying, "We need programs like the IB program at GW here in southwest Denver." We certainly have the number of kids. There are a lot of programs that the district has done a phenomenal job. And there is absolutely no reason why, within the student bodies that we have, we have the capacity in terms of the number of students who could be identified and who would love to go to Kennedy instead of all the way across town. You have to really work to build the strengths of neighborhoods. That's how you have strong teams. I mean, achievement academically is done as an individual. But to build a sense of community, you start building pride about the collective achievement of different things. When you have the critical mass of artists who are going to DSA, it's a collective pride. We want to feel proud of the students from our district that are making other schools look good. We want to have programs that have, you know, shown results. So the charters have been good incubators, but they've also been given a lot of latitude. And the latitude that the chapters have, that the charters have, are not given to the regular schools. As a matter of fact, a teacher or a principal wants to be creative, innovative. They are penalized. And so we have got to stop stifling our educators. We're losing people to other districts.
I want to bring in Rosemary on this. On the topic of choice, she's talking, you know, you heard what she said.
I did.
Charters, these sort of new model schools. What do you think? Does that, the kind of school it is, does that have a pretty big impact?
Well, I do think it does have an impact. It does allow that latitude, you know, and mostly it's being outside of the union contract. I'm very proud of the kids at D S S T College View. It's the number-one performing school in the city and county of Denver, and it's in southwest Denver. When I was on city council, I did everything in my power, and I failed, to get West Denver Prep in my district for the kids of Westwood who had nothing, no opportunities, educational opportunities, after some of the Catholic schools closed, except for the neighborhood school. It's just outside of Council District Three, but it's been on the top ten ever since it was opened. Now, we need to replicate those programs. And Denver Public Schools has a great program where they're switching principals. They're training principals. Denver, you know, traditional school principals in these charter schools so that they can see what innovation brings to the building. And I'm sorry, I use the word "building." I mean the school.
But when there are these, I mean, you know, there's a lot of tension, it seems like, at least philosophically, between neighborhood schools and charter schools. Do you believe in both? I mean, you're not saying that every school would be better off if it was a charter school.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I believe every... I don't believe every school should be a charter school. The parents in the southwest district want to send their kids to neighborhood schools. That's another reason I support co-location of charters in neighborhood schools. People want to go in their neighborhoods, but we have to make sure our neighborhood schools are high-performing or we need to open the doors to more opportunities.
Anything you want to respond to?
Yes.
Quickly, we've got to move on to the next one.
My passion, if I wasn't doing this, I'd be a happy lab rat. I love to work in science and in labs. And for me, it is very distressing to see that the equipment, such as a fume hood or other things that you consider standard in a teaching laboratory, are missing. So when we hold the biology or the chemistry teacher at Lincoln High School responsible for making sure that the students have that laboratory experience, you can read about the laboratory experience, but it is not the laboratory experience. And I think the final insult to the injury would be to co-locate a school where all the resources for successful science and math instruction are provided, but yet the school that has been there and taught the parents, grandparents, and the great-grandparents is lacking in those resources.
She said, "Hey, charter schools can innovate. They have looser regulations because they're not bound by union contracts."
It isn't, yeah. And there again, we're holding the teachers who don't control the budget, who have no say in the resources that are given to them. They are held responsible. You could be union or non-union, but you walk into a lab and you're expected to teach students. You need the microscope. You need the bunsen burners. You need a working fume hood. The contract is not going to make things appear or disappear. And so for the district to dangle a charter if you want all those resources, it is telling the teachers, "You really don't count." Instruction anywhere is built by the consensus and collective work of people who are very strong in their discipline.
I take it you don't quite agree with that.
Well, for the sake of argument, I don't.
I'm not trying to start an argument here.
No, no. And then what the contract, what the contract, I think, prohibits is the freedom for teachers. For example, when Strive started their in-home visits, the teachers at a neighborhood school said, "Well, the contract doesn't allow that." So it's those types of things. I don't know about the equipment and the bunsen burners, but I do know that the longer school day, the more accountability, the Saturday morning tutorials that the teachers are doing at some of these charter schools are either not included in the contract or I might go as far to say prohibited by the contract. And so that's why some of these charters are getting the growth that they're getting because they're able to work longer, able to do Saturdays.
So there was an A-plus Denver candidate survey that you both filled out. We have a specific question for each of you based on your responses to that. And we're going to keep the response we can to about a minute each on this. Rosario, you indicated that you don't think the district is doing an effective job recruiting, supporting, and retaining teachers. If you're elected, how do you address that?
I would immediately ask to meet with faculty from the different disciplines and ask them, "How do you propose to improve English instruction? What would you do?" Because right now, the curriculum, all of those decisions are made above them. Start off with the educators. And I think, once you treat people with respect, it doesn't matter what profession you have, and you give them a say on what's going to improve the work that they do, they will tell you. And what works in one part of town may not work in another part of town. But math teachers are brilliant. Literature teachers are brilliant. They care. And we need to give them an opportunity to be at the table and develop the curriculum, develop the instruction, and they will rise to the task.
Okay. Rosemary, you said that you support using innovation status. We're just talking about this, to allow schools to have extra flexibility, different kinds of tools to support students. Elaborate on that a little bit, maybe with an example or two as to how that works and why.
Well, we were just talking about that flexibility that my opponent pointed out, you know, that she believed charters have and our traditional schools don't. Well, innovation status is that opportunity for a traditional school to reach for that flexibility so that they can deliver a program that really meets the needs of their children, meets their kids where they are, and advances them forward. Godsmann in our district, in the southwest district, is an example where they have innovation status and everybody's pulling together to really deliver high-quality education to every kid in that building, and it's working. It's an outstanding program.
I want to move to some district-specific questions that we have here. And I'm not going to tell you who to go first. I just, let's take about a minute or two on each question. And if, and you can interrupt each other. You can mix it up a little bit. Again, I'm not trying to start a fight. I just want to have an engaging debate here. Let's talk about transportation for a second. This is an issue that prevents a lot of families from choosing a school that's best for their child. It's especially true in this district with low-income Latino families. Should the district replicate the so-called Success Express in the southwest so that kids can easily get to and from other schools in the region other than what's closest to them? Someone take a stab at that.
Well, sure. But at the same time, I mean, it's great, but it is costly. And again, I say, let's remove the need to have to move kids out of the neighborhood schools and find a way of getting them to attend school here. My kids took the city bus to East. One day, there were two young women sitting in the seat in front of my son. This nut took out a knife and he stabbed the women. Not fatally, but it was very traumatic. So we have to consider what are some of the anxieties that parents have. Also, for children to have to travel outside their area, for a parent who works late. There are a lot of different things that create anxieties.
I want to bring in Rosemary. What do you think about the, you know, the broader availability of busing and getting kids beyond their, you know, close to school?
Yeah, I know the parents in southwest Denver really want some transportation options. I agree that they're costly, but I do think we should talk to them. We should explore it because if that's the only thing keeping their child between a high-quality school and their home, then I think we need to look at it.
There are a number of district-managed middle schools in this district, southwest Denver. They continue to languish with low proficiency and growth scores. Why do you think that is? And, you know, especially in terms of impacting these communities and why these kids can't bring up their scores? Why is that? Why is DPS not doing a better job in these schools? You want to start?
Surely. Well, I'll pick one. I think Coons-Miller is really struggling. It's also a huge school, and it's only grown in population. And one thing, one reason I think some of the charters have had success is they're limited to, you know, a few hundred kids, maybe 400 kids. And I would be interested, if Coons-Miller continues on its trajectory, to look at maybe a couple of options. They can be district-run. They can be charter. They can be either one. But smaller class sizes and smaller school sizes within the school to try to deliver a better product.
Rosario?
So certainly, thinking Coons-Miller. I mean, Coons-Miller actually has done something great, which is to begin an arts program. That is phenomenal, and we desperately need it. Keppner is another school that has had a lot of challenges. Both, one of the things that is common to both of these middle schools is just the huge turnover of families. And like I mentioned, specifically because Coons-Miller is in my attendance area. Economically, it's been very hard-hit. It's been very, very tough on the families that have lost their homes. And then there are people who have moved in there. And when you see just this broad-across-the-board loss in the value of the home where the families are more stressed, it impacts kids. We need to provide the kind of support that will help the kids focus on instruction, whether it's bringing in social workers, whether it's having more culturally proficient psychologists working with the children and their families. Because ultimately, everybody has to show up ready to work. And we need to identify what are the challenges that the families are facing so that they can meet them. At Gus Elementary, the retired principal, Jim Cullen, he's very active in the Rotary Club. They raise money for shoes, for clothes. They provide a lot of support so that when those children walk into the classroom, you don't know that that family has been homeless for two months. That child looks as bright and shiny and happy as the kid who has a stable home. And that's how we need to treat all the kids, that you're expected to learn, the parents are supposed to do their job. But what else can we do? What are the other community resources? And if we work together, we can do a better job.
A recent report from A-plus Denver on high schools showed that Lincoln High, where the president visited, I think, last year, pretty recently, was praised for its improvements in sending more kids to college. But more than 80% of those students, it shows, aren't prepared to do college-level work. How do you address that? And do you think that they're handing out diplomas, you know, too easily? I mean, do you think that if you're not college proficient, you should get the high school diploma? You want to start?
Surely. I think that's where Common Core is going to help us really assess how our, whether or not our children are ready for graduation. And for that reason, I support Common Core. The district just started a program, a remediation program, sort of a bridge program between high school and college. Six out of 10 of our kids require remediation once they start college. And I don't think that's, like my opponent, I don't think we should be delivering kids to colleges without adequate preparation. So I strongly support remediation programs. And, you know, that's why we need early childhood education, and that's why we need to know where kids are at third grade and seventh grade so we can...
So addressing it doesn't just happen in high school, is what you're saying?
It starts at the beginning.
Rosario?
Yeah. I care very much for what happens at Lincoln because when I see the kids in the neighborhood, they're good kids. They're responsible kids. They help out their families. And actually, a lot of the students are being tasked with helping raise the families, their siblings, while the parents are holding a second job and sometimes a third job because they work, you know, they don't work jobs that pay a lot. So in spite of that, you know, I tell my kids, if Abraham Lincoln could study under a kerosene lamp and be a great orator, there is no excuse for kids not developing a strong sense of what the world expects of them and not being prepared to be critical thinkers and to be able to write and read. And, you know, and it's true. Many of the kids who go into college do not know how to research a paper or how to write or how to do a lot of the different things that they need to do. And that's why I go back to saying that the faculty that have the different specialties need to be the ones to discuss what are the resources that they're using. It's not the classes that are wrong or it's the methods or the tools that they are given to teach. For a while, the district did a great job in letting faculty develop the Alma de la Raza curriculum. And my husband worked with them to make sure that they met all the different content standards for that discipline. There were white, Asian, Latino, African-American, Native American content units. The difference that it made for kids to be able to talk about something that was relevant to them and to be motivated to research. Sometimes, we have to find the way of making it a personal experience. It's all about establishing relationships. We establish a good relationship with the students where the education is relevant. Even if all they got was three hours of sleep, they are going to be motivated to do well because they have found something that validates their experience.
I have a question that was submitted online by a citizen. It said, "A lot of four-year colleges, CU, CSU included in that, require applicants to have studied a foreign language in high school." DPS, three years ago, eliminated that requirement. Do you agree with that decision? I mean, I know we're just talking about getting kids' achievement up in the basics, reading and writing, et cetera. But in terms of four-year colleges, getting them prepared for that, I mean, should this still be a district work?
Absolutely. And frankly, the only students who have an opportunity to develop proficiency in two languages are children who started off, like myself, knowing a language other than English. This in a state where there were three official languages, German, English, and Spanish. I truly believe that from the time that the children start school, they should... I truly believe that from the time that the children start school, they should be given the opportunity to study a second language. It's a great skill, and it's good for their brains. So at minimum...
So you disagree with the policy decision a couple of years ago?
Absolutely.
Rosemary, what about you?
I concur with my opponent.
Okay.
Disagree.
All right. Saving me time, allowing for another question. Thanks for that. You know, looking at the big picture, the DPS board, I know there's a lot made of the polarization, some controversial decisions, some big decisions. What are some of the worst, but also the best, decisions that the board has made in, say, the last decade? Do you want to start? Give me one of each.
Well, I think, I think struggling and getting through the whole co-location discussions and debates has been one of the best because it's allowed for growth in neighborhood schools for our children. So I would count that as one of the best. One of the worst? Geez, that is a really unique question. Well, I'll pick the one that our viewer just used, you know, eliminating the foreign language requirement. I don't think it should have been eliminated.
Okay. Rosario, in your view, the best, one of the best and one of the worst decisions the board's made in the last decade?
One of the best was to fund and establish the Denver School of the Arts. And one of the worst, I can think of several, but probably the most egregious was the closing of Manuel High in spite of the pleas from the parents and the faculty, and the manner in which the message was delivered. There was really no opportunity at all for the community to step forward, and for the alumni to step forward. There are very distinguished alumni from Manuel High and from some of the schools that are at risk. Just like the colleges are always calling us about giving money, you graduated from here, come and help us because we're doing this and we're doing that, there was no opportunity.
Rosemary, I want to have you respond to that because I know, I mean, Michael Bennett was superintendent when that happened, he was closely involved in that, and you worked closely with Michael still. I know you have some thoughts on that process, too.
Well, I actually went door-to-door and visited with Michael a number of the students, trying to make sure that they had enrolled in other programs. There were a lot of alumni, actually, with us every Saturday morning for about six weeks during that transition period. I don't want to tell his story, but yesterday he was at a speech in DC. Don't tell him I did this.
We're on TV right now, I mean, he's probably watching.
Well, these two kids came up to him after he gave a speech to the Congressional Hispanic Caucus, and they said, we were Manuel students, and we are so glad that you insisted that we get a better education. And he was just completely overcome, and I'm sure he'll tell you that story on his own, but it was very affirming. It was a hard, hard decision, and I think, you know, in retrospect, clumsy, the board made it, and, but I'm very proud of the work that I did to try to make sure that all the kids were enrolled in another school, and I have kept in touch with some of them.
The community in a better place now? Not just the school, but the community?
I think the community learned a lot. And another thing about Manuel is, at the time it was closed, most of those students were Latino, most of the population was Latino. And I don't think that the board or anybody should apologize for insisting that those kids get a better education.
You're sticking to your answer, though, right?
I am, because as much as some of the students did well, there's always people who are going to do well, but there were others who just dropped out of, you know, out of the education process. And when you think that many, many families are like mine, where I was the oldest, and I had to care for my younger siblings. For many, it's a very difficult, you know, choice to make. It's not that the kids don't care.
Thank you for your answers on that and on all the questions that we've asked you tonight. Now it is time for your closing statements. You each have about two minutes to talk directly to the people watching and directly to voters in Denver to explain why you're the better choice to represent this district on the DPS board. We flipped a coin on this, too. Rosemary, you'll begin.
All right. Thank you very much, Eli and Mrs. Cidabaka, for your time tonight. I want to thank Fox News and Stan, excuse me, Ed News Colorado and A-plus Denver for organizing this event tonight. It's given me an opportunity to learn about my opponent, and I hope it's given you an opportunity to learn about both of us. But let me just remind you what is so very important to me, achievement and closing the achievement gap. That's why I'm running. I, you know, got a busy life, busy family obligations, busy job, but I'm willing to sacrifice my time to work with you for higher achievement in our district, especially for Latino and African-American kids. Every child can succeed. I firmly, firmly believe that. We need to raise our expectations for their success, and we need to expect the best from them. Our children deserve excellent teachers. In fact, they have a right to excellent teachers in every classroom and strong principals in every school. I commit to work with parent groups, and I also intend to be held accountable for the decisions I make, just the way we're building accountability to this district for everybody from kids on up to administrators. Your ballots will come in the mail next week, and I hope if you live in District Two, you'll vote for me, vote for Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Two minutes. Rosario Cidabaka, your closing statement.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the people who came from southwest Denver. Margaret, Rafa, Amelia, Juan, and especially Ethel Scribko, who, like myself, raised a lot of children and worked hard to get them to be very responsible, productive members of the community. I want to thank Liz, who took a lot of time to get us through this process and helped us all be here, and to everybody else and yourself for running this program and making our views available to the community. I am running for Denver Public Schools because my children received a great education, they graduated from Denver Public Schools, and it was a true partnership with the educators in each of those schools. And even though I thought my job was done, I am very concerned that those same opportunities that were available to my children continue to be made available to them. And it is a pleasure for me to reach out to the families, and I do pledge to meet with community members in English and Spanish because we need to help the new immigrant families understand what life in America is and how to succeed, and to work with all the other parents who have a very common interest in making sure that the children with special needs, who have children with a very strong passion for the science or the arts, that we help them achieve their goals. And most of all, that the people who have made the commitment to fund public schools, the regular, everyday taxpayer, understands that we are honoring what they contribute to the families here in the district. And I will work to make sure that there is transparency, that contractors who are hired to do the work in DPS, that we do everything possible to create local jobs. There are many things that we, as a district, who handle such an enormous budget, as much as we can, reinvest it here, and that the promotions to administrative positions, that we look within-house. Many of our principals, many of our teachers have done an outstanding job, and now work in other districts. Let's grow our own leadership. We can set an incredible example and retain the best.
Thank you.
I'm Rosario Cidabaka. Vote for me.
Thank you for voting for being here tonight. And thank you to all of you at home for watching tonight. The final school board debate is next week. That's the Northeast Denver District, and that is Wednesday, October 9. You can watch it right here at 7:00 PM on DPS TV, Channel 22, and it'll also be streamed online live at dpsk12.org/channelf22. And most importantly, don't forget to vote on November 5. Thanks for watching. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.